Okay, so let me call this regular meeting of the Board of Public Safety to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. Where the meeting is here in the City Hall Auditorium and the commissioners attending this evening are Commissioner Spino, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner McLeod, and Commissioner Battle. So we do have a quorum. I don't see anybody on the Zoom room. So before we jump into, oh, and I'm sorry, for the record, it is 6:34. Before we jump into the agenda, would we stand and pledge a flag, please? So I, before I go into item number one, I just wanted to ask the board and members of the public if you would join me in a moment of silence in recognition of the incredible years of service that Attorney Victor Michelle has provided to the city in his role with the Board of Safety representing our police department, our fire department over decades, and our Board of Education. It is with a very heavy heart that I share with you that he did pass. In for a moment of silence. Thank you. So item number one on this evening's agenda is, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public for comments. Thank you, Commissioner Spino, and second by Commissioner Battle. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'll move into item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September 6th, 2023. Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, second by Commissioner Benedetto. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I will entertain a motion to utilize state contract number 17 PSX 0024AB for the purchase of fire department uniforms from Fairfield Uniform Company of Bridgeport, Connecticut. This will be paid from the uniform allowance line item as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated September 28th, 2023. This has already been approved by the City Council.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions? And I do know Chief Borden did inform the council that these expenditures are actually going to span two fiscal years. So we've encumbered funds from the 23 fiscal year and we will be utilizing funds from the FY '24. So if there are no questions, I will call the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's report for August 2023. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the report?
I assume you'll speak for Officer Buzzy and Kessel after, in your time. Okay.
Good, okay. All right. If there are no questions, I'll call this motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept Fire Chief Borden's report for August 2023. Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments? Hearing no questions? I'll call the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the EMS provider activity report for August 2023. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, and second by Commissioner Spino. Questions? I know, I was on a roll. Sorry. Questions or comments on this activity report? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the volunteer fire departments. Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Spino. Questions or comments? Oh, wait a minute, this is, I'm sorry. So Mr. Potter, you're here to represent?
So I just want to bring you up to date with a couple items. As you know, recruitment is ongoing, always. We currently have two people in firefighter one. The air packs, Sky Air Packs that we have are being, that were taken out of service, replaced with new air packs through a grant, are being donated to an organization down in Trumbull that are going to send them to Ukraine. So instead of them going in the dump, they'll go to Ukraine. We're hoping that recruitment kind of is plateaued right now. We're hoping that it'll pick back up once our fund drive letter gets out and with the brochures in it, that we're hoping that things will start picking up with that again. I think if you, if you remember, we talked about the old ambulance that was donated by Campion years ago. Went to the junkyard, basically, fell apart. And fortunately, we, we were able to cobble together some support from different businesses and people, and we recently purchased a 2017 Ford Connect, Transit Connect van, smaller van. So we're working on getting that put together and be able to put that into service as a fireplace unit. Probably by the end of the month, hopefully. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that the Bottle Stop in the downtown shopping plaza approached both volunteer fire companies about a month ago. And he wanted to do something to support the volunteers. So he's doing a promotion with one of his vendors this month. And at the end of the month, if the promotion is successful, he'll be making a donation to both volunteer departments to support them. And that's all I have.
Do we know which product the promotion is through?
Go down to Bottle Stop and...
Thank you. Do we have, I can't tell who's on this call is, we have nobody from Drakeville? Oh, okay. All right. We're all set with that then. Then let's move into item number eight. I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner McLeod. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief Borden?
Yesterday, we were able to hire another officer, Jeff Loris, from Stratford was sworn in yesterday morning and got him on Friday. The unfortunate thing is that he won't be out of graduating the academy until April of 2024, end of April, first part of May. But we're very excited to have him on board. Next week, on the 12th, we'll be graduating too from the academy. Conrad Avalone and Brett Wesner will have completed their training in Meriden, so they'll be graduating on the 12th to be, just as December or October marks Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So it just, we've put some messages out on our social media to make people aware of the fact that this is the month that we do some education and awareness of domestic violence issues. There was a wreath ceremony on Monday that the mayor participated in. Also, I participated in a small video for the Susan B. Anthony Project for their 40-year anniversary, congratulating them on 40 years and for the negatives of work that they've been doing for not only the city of Torrington, but our entire region. Also, you'll see officers wearing purple patches. We purchased purple patches as a means to bring awareness to domestic violence. So some of the officers will be donning purple patches on their uniforms. Today, myself and Deputy Chief Barone, as well as several other members of my department, were at a Officer Wellness Symposium down in New Haven to discuss issues concerning officer wellness. Our department was recognized and given an award for the Serve Well Be Well Award today for the, we've been doing an officer wellness through our peer support team and our EAP program. Also today, our, if you, I sent on an email to the board yesterday. Our tech team worked with the Milford Helicopter Eagle Two was flying around the city today. They were doing some training with that Eagle Two, so there's going to be more of that coming down the road. Our animal control facility is, we're still waiting for a CO. There's some issues with the fire alarm right now. So they're working on getting that fixed and getting that, getting a CO for our animal control. Myself and the mayor had discussed a official ribbon cutting ceremony, and we're hoping for November 1st ceremony for the animal control facility. Earlier this month, Officers Jeff Buzzy and Dave Kissel received a prestigious award, the Medal of Valor Award by the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association for the incident that they were involved in, the use of force incident that they were involved in back in March of last year. They, it was the, it was investigated by the Inspector General, the newly formed Inspector General's office, and they concluded that they acted appropriately, violated no department policies. And quite honestly, everybody that reviewed this report indicated that they did a significant and exceptional job in having to confront an extremely serious situation. So we're very, very proud of the two of them. And we're very grateful for the CPCA for recognizing the work that they did and for giving them that Medal of Valor Award. The emergency management perspective, everybody should have gotten a text today sometime around 2 o'clock. That was a national text, or a national alert. There may be more of those coming down the road, but I think is the first of its kind for a nationwide alert. So that will be in the event that there's something major, international, significant issue. We can expect some kind of a alert system from our federal government. And other issues during the significant rains that we've been having. And we're also expecting more rain again on Saturday. The latest forecast is anywhere from one to three to four inches. Hopefully, the storm does move outward, so we don't get any flooding. But Summer Street is a continual, continual issue with flooding. We, our traffic division, along with myself, have been working with the street department and speaking to Tim Cody, who's the director, who's over at the street department. He's working with Public Works and they're looking to potentially get that situation fixed finally, drainage issue. We also have a sinkhole that was formed on Marshall Lake Road, which is pretty significant. The street department took care of that for us. Also, just, you know, I'm trying to promote emergency management webpage and also our social media for the emergency management. A lot of the alerts that people have been getting have been through the police department Facebook page as well as police department internet page. So I want people to start paying attention to the emergency management Facebook page and social media accounts that will be getting more alerts for issues that are taking place within our community. Also, again, I want to reemphasize the Torrington Alerts System and the program. I'm hoping that everybody here has signed up for that and that you would promote it to your constituents and the people that you come across. Our COVID cases are relatively low. We have to consider the fact that we are entering flu season. There has been some small rise in COVID cases, but they're not significant. Nothing to be alarmed about. Last time I spoke to Mark or Rob Rubo from Torrington Area Health, he indicated that there is no anticipated mandates coming forward and that the cases at this point, the variant is a very mild case. Although it's, people are still getting sick. But again, we just need to be aware of the fact that COVID still exists, that we still need to take the precautions, washing hands, social distancing, along that line. Currently updating our local emergency operations plan. It's due January 1st. Our current plan is still active and effective. So that should be out and about by the 1st of January. And also, we'll be doing an emergency management exercise next Wednesday. Or, I'm sorry, two Wednesdays from now, on the 18th, Deputy Chief Tripp will be facilitating that event. I'll be out of state at that time, but Deputy Chief Tripp will be facilitating. It's required by the state, and it's usually a yearly tabletop exercise regarding an event that takes place within. That's all I have.
As you know, we're going to, we're going to make one more attempt at the PAL Golf Tournament. Hopefully this weekend's rain doesn't cause any additional flooding and course damage. It's scheduled right now for the 12th, so hopefully we can get that off and we'll have good weather. Oh, yeah, and the car show was canceled due to weather. Unfortunately, it seems like every weekend we have rain, and again, this weekend, we're going to have more. So the car show was unfortunately canceled due to the weather, and we had to push the golf tournament off again, but hopefully next Thursday, we'll be able to get it. Temperatures right now are look to be maybe 60 degrees, so it'll be a nice fall day. And hopefully it stays dry.
Thank you. Chief Borden?
Fire Department, we are anticipating to get the RMS system that we got approved in October and start working with it with an implementation, hopefully, and start working in January. Uniforms, as you guys just voted on, we're going to start moving forward with that and setting up with Fairfield Uniform, the allotment with the new contract. EMS plan is ready to be submitted for December, and then PSA, we were supposed to meet tomorrow, I believe, and that's postponed. It is later date, so we're waiting on that. And then recently, a lot of rumors floating around the fire department, we just lost one member to Bradley Airport. And I anticipate probably two to three more also in the queue resigning for their personal reasons. And we're going to try to do what we can do with that. And then we also have scheduled three vacancies that we're trying to fill. One of the problems that we have right now is we currently use the consortium list, and we pretty much exhausted that the last time we hired, and they're not retesting again until spring. And the academy starts in spring just before that. So we're trying to look at alternatives, maybe doing our own testing through the same testing company that we used for the promotional process last time. But that's still in the infant stages is what we're going to do with that, so that we can hopefully fill those gaps and cut back on any overtime and things like that. With that said, I had a letter from the last person that just retired, and I apologize, I was not able to bring it with me tonight. I will scan it in and provide it to you guys all via email, very eloquently put as to why he was resigning from the department and the city. So I think it's, it's good reading for everyone. I'm just returning from a initiative type thing. It's called Strengthen Your Mind Initiative. I brought this up last October. It's a thing where they take emergency services personnel and military who are dealing with PTSD issues and/or family issues or whatever, and they bring them up for a three-day retreat. And part of that, the major part of that is peer support and mindfulness initiative to help them kind of refocus and redirect their, their lives and get back on track kind of thing. And I just spoke with Chief Borden about that, that I really want to see this move forward from the city of Torrington and get more people involved when our, our members are kind of struggling to give them the help that they need. It was a very good thing. Chief Borden brought up the flooding. With that said, the fire department, for at least two, two and a half days, really took a beating call volume wise, trying to help people out with flooding issues and cellar pump outs, et cetera. And, you know, one of the calls that we look at and say, you know, is it needed that we go on? But it absolutely is because these people very often had several feet of water in their basement, and, and they had no other choice but to call the fire department. One in particular was on Highland Avenue, a lady there that her furnace was flooded almost up to her electrical box, and she was left without water and without heat during that time. And that was actually a cold spell during that time. So you know, continue to try to provide the services we can, but it's a struggle for the guys every day and women. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Anything from Trinity this evening? All right, let us move into item nine. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members of the Board of Safety. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor? Any opposed? Starting to my left, Commissioner Battle, anything this evening?
Congratulations to our police department. And we're glad to hear that you're participating in different parts of support programs and that kind of thing. But I think that's really good and necessary. Also, I'm so sorry to hear about it.
Wow.
Yeah, wow. And so that's all I have. And good to see everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McLeod?
I have a question for each chief. With the award blessing and pieces of that, is that something, you would plan to have something here? Or could you do something here? I mean, I think it's something, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Some, some of the awards ceremony to me are edgy. You know, but I think something like that is pretty significant, where I think they should be recognized by the board. If you can get them on overtime or something.
We're, we're in the process that we've talked about doing. We're in the process and we're talking about doing an award ceremony here to honor several officers. It's been far too long since we've done an award ceremony. Myself, the deputy chief, members of our awards committee have, that, that's in discussion right now. It seems like every time we plan a specific event, something comes up and kind of pushes things back. As a matter of fact, I probably work with Chief Borden, and we may be able to do a potential joint award ceremony for members of your department as well as members of my department. And that, at that event, we would, we could recognize the both, the two officers for the heroic efforts.
Chief Borden, for a morning, we have a vehicle replacement vehicle replacement meeting. As far as the deputy fire chief's car. Do we need to even replace that?
Which? The fire marshal's?
The fire marshal, mate. I'm sorry, I said deputy.
Just trying to catch up. Go ahead.
Yeah, the fire marshal's car that was, that was totaled that we're going to replace?
Yes, we don't, we don't have enough in the fleet to do that. So our original vehicle replacement plan that we voted on, I believe, the last meeting was to replace one of the vehicles and then through attrition move things down, ultimately getting rid of the spare district chief's vehicle that they had, which was the Expedition, which is, Fleet has basically said, if you bring it down, we're probably not going to give it back to you. It's that bad. So with that said, we don't have any spare, enough spare vehicles to be able to give the fire marshal's office what they need. That right now, we have a loaner vehicle from Fleet, from one of the other departments that is using.
I think my point is more so, do we need three cars?
Yes.
Why do we need three cars? This has been bothering me for many years, and because we, we have to replace one now, I want to bring it up. I, I don't personally do not see the need for three fire marshal cars and going home every night. I, I know we have to have at least one. I could accept two on call every night taking their cars home. I don't see three. I just don't, have never been able to understand that.
There's a lot of things that go with it. So obviously, we need three cars during the day, because they're all out doing their individual inspections and things that they need to do within that office. As far as take-home vehicles, a lot of that comes down to who's available, who's closest, et cetera. We can do duty cycles and look at that, but probably going to be looking at some kind of stipend to the, say, you're on call this week, that kind of thing, and flipping flop, but that would be another conversation that's probably pretty lengthy to look at all the idiosyncrasies with that. But there is benefits to having them, having a take-home car. None of them live very far away. But they're available to come back in. Sometimes if it's a bigger incident, maybe both of them need to come in, or two of them need to come in, and sometimes three. So you really can't dictate what the next call will be that they might need to be doing. And adding to that is vehicles that sit and don't move tend to degrade a lot quicker. And then you have a lot of other things of just moving things around and taking, make sure that things are available when they're needed. One of the biggest things is with our fire marshal's office right now is that we don't have an on-call duty officer. So any one of them at a particular time, because they're not, they don't have to be available because they're not on call, could be called. Now, for them to come from their residence to the fire station, pick up a vehicle, and then go to the scene to investigate is a lengthy time, which is tying up resources that we don't want to tie up, because we are very limited on our resources that we have currently just to fight fires. So we don't want to tie them up on the scene, waiting for the fire marshal to get there. So that's why we're currently using that model. But I'd be welcome to...
I understand that, but do we need three of them to be available to be there immediately? We don't have that many fires.
Like I said, the problem is, is there's not a duty, there's not a duty. We could look at doing that, but again... There's, there's other considerations to go with that, that's all.
But it just, you know, to buy a new car, I just don't think is necessary. That's, that's all.
Well, the insurance is going to cover part of that, obviously, but the way it was working before, the system did work well. And like I said, unless we start talking about contractual language and some other things, because they are all in the union.
Is it contractual or is it just past practice?
No, it's contractual all day long. If you're going to tell them they're going to be on call, we have to somehow compensate them for that on-call time, because they have to give up everything in their daily life at night to be on call at any given moment. So, but like I said, it'd be more than willing to entertain the conversation, but it's a much bigger thing than right here, I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? You're done? Okay, Commissioner Benedetto?
Yes, I have a couple things. Chief Borden, the fire marshal's, he had a car accident with his, his vehicle in Winston, right, in September? And then Battalion Chief Sterling had an accident on East Main Street about a week later, is it? So I sent out a text to the Board of Public Safety, Deputy Chief, the chief, about the incident, and now it's October 4th. And I don't think anybody on this board was notified. And can you tell me why?
Yes, Chief Pessata's accident was during a Board of Safety meeting, and you guys were informed verbally by me. Following that was not a week later, it was actually that Friday. And that was Chief Sterling's accident. And during the time that that was happening, I notified the mayor immediately. And from that point on, I had to figure out what we're doing as a department to get back on our feet, because we just lost two vehicles that are primary vehicles. Also making sure Chief Sterling was good, healthy, and taken care of, et cetera. So at that time, I didn't have time to immediately reach out to you. I received a personal text from Commissioner McLeod about 8:30 scathing me for not responding back to you guys as a board. So it brings up the issue of what do we notify, how do we notify, et cetera? Because everybody gets a text, as far as I know, we've set up that information, that you get that initial stuff. So from there, where does my obligation stand that I have to sit there and notify each of you individually of what's going on while I'm still trying to make sure our department is whole?
Well, it's very simple. If it's newsworthy, it's going to make the newspaper...
Newsworthy, I, I contact the mayor immediately.
It, it should be, we should be contacted, because we're elected by the people of the city of Torrington. That's taxpayer vehicle, paid by the taxpayer. Taxpayers are asking us questions, and we are, we don't know. We're in the dark. Police Department, you should follow their model.
Commissioner, no offense. I carry a department phone and a personal phone, to each of which, both you and Commissioner McLeod have my numbers. I did not receive one phone call. I received a text after Commissioner McLeod started investigating on his own without even calling me.
So...
Without even calling me. So.
Chief, I went to buy Lotto tickets and the kid at the, kid at at Paco told me about it. I didn't, I investigated after that. But he said to me, he says, did you hear what happened today? I said, no, I didn't. What happened?
Oh, you, you investigated on your own.
Okay, so at that point, and by the way, and I'm gonna let it go, because I I'm just gonna get really ticked off. Yes, you, you did answer my text and you were gonna call me the next day.
And I chose not to. I, I was quite angry with the, with your text.
So.
The, just the, the, I'm, I'm not finished. The, the, just the lack of communication in that Fire Department, this Police Department, they inform us.
So let me ask a question. We voted.
And you have, and you have a deputy, you have a deputy, you have battalion chiefs and you have lieutenants.
You're talking over me. Okay, we voted two meetings ago about policy. What the board was gonna develop for policy. I think this is a great example of something that needs to be developed from the pol, from the board. Say, how we notify you, when we notify you and what the actual notification could be. Because I can speak on my behalf and I don't wanna speak on Chief Baldwin's behalf, but when we're in the middle of something, we're pretty busy. And we've got a lot of concerns going on and to be able to make notifications, that's gonna be an afterthought. And I apologize about that, but we do.
We don't wanna know at the time of the incident. It's October fourth, this happens September eighth. We still don't know.
That's cause we're talking now, but.
So, and, and I.
Good thing we have social media, because that's how we find out stuff.
I think that the um, the chief is correct and um, and to the board. That did decide they wanted to establish a policy committee. It's the first thing I said as I'm listening to the questions. Um, I do believe that this is a great opportunity for this to be a policy notification.
Just in being common courtesy, it'd have to be written into a policy.
And, and chief, to fairness to you, your deputy's been in this department for thirty years. He knows, he knows, and he's just not doing it.
I'll take the responsibility. I'm not pushing that on him. That, that, that lies on me.
But it lies on you and him.
It, it's on me. I'll, I'll take that.
So that's the first issue. The second issue is um, the guys are unloading a truck at Friendly Hands Food Bank. What's that all about?
Part of our community service that we do. We don't do it very often. We go down when they don't have enough members to help them and we go down there to say we're helping the community. It's very much like doing any kind of public relation events that we do, et cetera.
But one of our lieutenants almost got run over by a pallet truck and a pallet.
I'm not aware of that.
And they called the Public Works and they would not do it because it's not in their job description, so they called the Fire Department. That's the other issue. So, and then I have the third issue is EMS calls. On this incident, list of incidents, in August, I got thirty calls where we were on scene less than fifteen seconds. And we're running a ladder truck, engine one and engine four, or engine four and engine two, I'm sorry, and a ladder truck. So we're tying up three vehicles. On Saturday, we had three vehicles tied up three times. What is your plan? If there's a fire, emergency comes in.
My plan is the same as it was before that we discussed this.
No, I'm asking.
We moved on past this, but I will answer your question. Point blank is we are gonna deliver our services the best we can with the resources we have. On any given day, I can't forecast what the call volume's gonna be and what our resource availability is gonna be, but we do our best to balance it. And that's as simple as it is. So we talked about this before. I developed, I showed you the EMS plan, what we're doing. And how we're doing it, and that's how we're still proceeding and continue to do that.
And it's not working.
It is working.
So why don't we put.
Any system in the world, I don't care if it's New York City, Hartford, Bridgeport, any, you pick a department. There are times that you're overtaxed. It just happens. You can't forecast that. And as was put to me, and I won't say who by, by who, you can't staff the Public Works Department for snow. Removal at that level, three hundred and sixty-five, four days a year, right? It just doesn't happen. You have to base on emergencies and you up.
And, and totally understand.
To, but the fact of the matter is you can't forecast it.
I'm asking what the plan is if three of our engines are tied up at EMS calls. What do we do?
We will.
And we can't break away from those EMS calls until the ambulance gets there.
We rely on our mutually partners to start.
And how long is that gonna take?
I can't tell you that, because we're relying on volunteers, we're surrounded by volunteers. We start that and then our guys free up as soon as possible. And they start to go back into the system to be able to respond to that next call.
But my concern, we're running.
Discuss this, you brought the South Main Street.
Calls with a fire truck, with a ladder truck, that's not needed.
How do you know?
How do I know? It says it right here. It's in your incident report, thirty times, and that's when I stopped counting.
It's not that it's not needed. We're responding because of the need of the call when it's dispatched. Afterwards, resources become available to the system, which is Trinity, being able to say, yeah, we can be there and they dismiss us, et cetera. So when you look at the times, fifteen seconds, they dismiss us, et cetera. That's because they became available into the system and we're able to say. We don't need that resource and that's the things that we are working together with every day.
Thirty times, they'd have a need our resources. So my concern is. We should leave at least one truck in that station at all times in case of a fire or emergency. Because we're gonna get caught one day that a fire comes in and we are tied up.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Same scenario, gonna get caught with somebody having a heart attack that we didn't go to?
Well, we've got an ambulance service.
About a seizure, what about whatever? What if they can't go?
And they could call me.
And we're sitting in quarters. How do you answer that question?
You, they, we have an ambulance service that they can handle it. They don't call you guys. You guys self dispatch.
We work in partnership. We don't self dispatch. Everything's laid out for the calls we go on. We went over this already.
It needs to be.
Clearly articulated what the calls we go on and we work in partnership with them. When they're able to go, they dismiss us as quickly as possible, so we can go back and service. But if they're not able to go, we need to be there. Somebody needs our services.
And we're hired, we hired these guys as firemen, not EMS. We, we're not equipped to do EMS.
We're supplemental.
That's all. I think we need to put that policy group together and get these trucks parked. Get a policy in place, so there's communication and this board knows what's going on in public safety.
Um, I agree with you and as I had mentioned um offline with uh a few of the board members that did inquire. Uh, my intention was right after the election, when we know who the seated members are, we can. Appoint members to that policy committee and beginning in December, start meeting and going over. What are those priorities and where do we wanna develop those policies? Um, and I agree, clear expectations are um. You know, are, are warranted here, so that the chiefs understand what the expectations are, as well as what the board is, knows what their expectations are. So, I agree. You're not done. Go ahead.
Now let's get to the police. Um, early in the week, I contacted Deputy Chief and um. The Barraco um had an event today, coffee with a cop. And prior to that event, they watched um a YouTube video on why cops eat donuts and drink coffee. So they, they had a clear understanding why they do that. It's not because they're fat and lazy, just put that on the record. It's because of their schedule and they're always on the move and it's quick. So that's the reason.
I thought you were gonna ask for a policy about that.
But it was a great event. Um, clients were a little fearful of cops. So they came in and they talked to the clients. None of the clients said anything while the cops were there, but they interacted. Um, gave them donuts, gave them coffee and took some pictures and, and it was, it was a great event, so. Um, so thank you guys for, for letting them. Uh, Chief Borden, they're gonna do the same thing for fire and I will contact you. If, if you're interested and let you know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Spino.
Okay, I'm all set.
So, and I, so, and for the record, Commissioner Joe McElroy is in the Zoom room. Um, uh, and he just texted and said he did not have any questions. Um, so with that, I think we can. Uh, move into uh item number ten. If there is no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.